Meeting number thirty-five is now called to order. This is June 3rd, 2019, at 5:30 PM and we're in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, roll call, please.
Graham Murray.
Here.
McCamell.
Here.
Brinker. Wilson.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
All right. First on the agenda tonight, we have a couple Mayor's Awards and this first one that I'm going to be giving out, maybe we just have one tonight, but the first one that I'm going to be giving out, I'm giving out to a gentleman that was a tremendous blessing to me when I decided to run for City Council and it didn't stop there. He's still a tremendous blessing to me and truth be told, I spoke with him this morning asking for his advice and he always returns calls, always gets back to me and I consider him a dear friend and he also happens to be a past mayor for like fifteen thousand years or something like that. So, it is my pleasure to recognize you tonight. Thank you for coming down. On behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for your dedicated service as Mayor of the City of Burlington from 1998 through 2003. It's a tough job, but someone has to do it. Thank you for stepping up and making Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On this April, it was April fifteenth when I wrote this up, so I just left it then. This Mayor's Award is presented to former Mayor Timothy E. Scott. Shane A. McCamell, Mayor, would you come on down, Mr. Scott? Thank you, sir. I'll present you with that.
Sweet. Thank you.
And it's got the city logo on the other side. Can we get a picture taken together? I don't feel my street cred.
There's a camera, but the paper won't break.
I think a camera will break. Oh, Timmy Gotti. You grassed on you. God bless your bed. Timothy, would you please have a word this day?
Shane, you've been an officer of mayor. You really have. I appreciate you thinking of everybody, past mayors, present citizens, do-gooders and the like and you've been great doing that. I appreciate it. I appreciate this. I'm not going to leave without giving something back. In 1999, a gentleman approached me and says, "I've got something I want to pass along to you." And I said, "What's that?" And he handed me this. It's an original street sign for Roosevelt Avenue that he, as a child, picked up off of the streets of when they were turning Roosevelt Avenue from gravel to concrete.
That's neat.
Boy, that's been a while ago, my friend.
Not as long ago as you think. It was 1950, I believe, was the year when that happened, at least this portion of it. He passed it along to me for safekeeping and I've had it in my shop since 1999 and I want to pass it along. Now, you can either take this home and enjoy it for the next ten years and pass it on to another mayor, or you can put it in the showcase on the second floor, or whatever you want to do with it, but it's yours, it's your responsibility now, so I would just like for you to do that for me, would you?
It's my privilege for that to be my responsibility.
Yeah, that's cool.
That's neat. Okay, turn it around, bud.
I want to get a few things off. It's like the return.
Thanks, man. Thank you, sir. Enjoy the rest of your evening, sir.
Thanks, Tim.
See you, Tim.
All right. My next Mayor's Award winner tonight, apparently did not want to come down and be my friend tonight, so maybe he'll be down a little bit later and we'll jump to that. Next on the agenda tonight, we have a proclamation for Juneteenth. I believe Orlando Dial will be receiving that.
You said Orlando?
Orlando Dial.
Okay, got it. Whereas the state of Texas made Juneteenth the first official African-American holiday in the United States in 1978, and whereas Juneteenth is the oldest African-American holiday observance, and whereas Juneteenth is synonymous with freedom and is observed nationally by many, and whereas the Burlington, Iowa branch of the NAACP is sponsoring the Juneteenth celebration in Burlington on Saturday, June 15th, 2019, at the D. Edwin and Gladys White Memorial Park, and whereas the theme for this Juneteenth celebration is a celebration of freedom, and now therefore we, the City Council of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Saturday, June 15th, 2019, as Juneteenth Day in Burlington and ask all of the citizens of Burlington to help celebrate this event. Signed and sealed this third day of June, 2019, the Honorable Shane A. McCamell. And this goes out to Orlando Dial? Am I pronouncing it right?
Again, the Burlington branch of the NAACP thanks the city for its support and recognition
of Juneteenth and we will be at Gladys and D. Edwin Park on the fifteenth of June from eleven to four and as I understand it, the mayor has the authority to tell the chief of police that they must be in the dump tank and so we'll let you take care of that.
I want to make a correction. I can't, I don't have the authority for the chief of police, just for the major.
Oh. I got turned around.
It's my pleasure. It's my pleasure to inform him. Thank you.
Then I understand that if someone is in their last term as mayor, that it's been a tradition that they buy all the City Council members a Juneteenth t-shirt.
Yeah, for sure.
And so the, actually, the major is the chair of the t-shirt committee for the NAACP and you can see him and take care of that, but I would also like to say that he is chairing that part of Juneteenth and I don't know how many cities that celebrate Juneteenth can say that the NAACP and the Police Department work in conjunction to get those things done and that makes a big difference in the quality of life that we have here in Burlington and we also want to thank the city for the continued improvements at Gladys and D. Edwin Park. Something has been added or improved every year, the last three years, so again, we thank you for your support.
We thank you.
Well, all right. It looks like my other friend showed up, so we get to be buddies tonight. This next gentleman I want to recognize, I've given him a hard time because sometimes he's come down here pointing the finger, but it's because he cares about his community and he has been a voice to those that don't feel like they have a voice and everybody needs that. Everybody needs somebody to speak up and speak for them at some point in time. This gentleman has done that and I want to recognize him tonight for that. On behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your passion and your voice for those who may have felt muted is appreciated, even for the least of these, my brethren. People like you help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On June 3rd, 2019, this Mayor's Award is presented to Fred Starling. Come on. If I got a cheering section like that, I'd be somebody. Let me give you one of these, Fred. Yes, we're going to take a picture as well, so people can think I'm somebody. Just turn around and face this way.
You guys might want to face and turn.
Let's all, yeah, can we get somebody to take a picture with all of us with? Absolutely, let's all get in on this. I don't want to eat this. Give him a dump tank. Super. Wouldn't you please have a word? Yes, please.
Freddy Starling, 117 South Street, Brooklyn, Iowa. I am trouble, but I come in peace. I just want to say I'm grateful and I appreciate you, so many others have done tremendous things here in the city and I feel the least one, but somehow you chose me and I'm so thankful and I'm so grateful and I'm so appreciative and may you continue your great work in the city and I'm just a watchdog on this side. God bless you. Thank you.
I'm going to let you and your cheering crew, you guys are welcome to leave, so you don't have to stick around for the ugly stuff, but I do mean this, Burlington is a better place because of you. So, thank you again for coming down. God bless you.
Amen.
Wow, the major gets hugs when people leave. Man, this guy, this guy, is the camera on this guy? Look at that. Is the camera on this guy?
He's like a celebrity.
All right, thanks again for coming down, everybody. Okay, we're going to roll downhill now, kids. This is time for the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item One Consent Agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual finances, miscellaneous, excuse me, miscellaneous minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports, and bonds. We have six resolutions. The first is a resolution approving nuisance abavements for various properties. The second is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the 2018 HMA overlay project. The third is a resolution approving final acceptance and final payment for the 2018 West Burlington and Agency Intersection Travel, I'm sorry, Traffic Signal Detection. The fourth is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the 2018 Depot White Boxing. The fifth is a resolution approving purchase of replacement of farm tractor for the wastewater treatment facility and then the sixth is a resolution adopting the personal manual for non-union employees. We have one hearing set for June 17th, which will be consideration of proposal to enter to a sewer revenue loan and dispersment agreement and to borrow money they're under in a principal amount not to exceed eight million one hundred seventy-six thousand dollars. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent agenda? Counsel?
I'm good.
Got a good motion now?
Move to approve all listed under Item One Consent Agenda.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCamell.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Okay, our first hearing, this is consideration of a sale of a portion of vacated alley right-of-way located north of 320 Luiza Street. Mr. Tisland.
This portion of alley right-of-way was vacated in March 6th, 1995 by ordinance number three zero two seven, approved by the City Council. At that time, it was not transferred to an owner, it was simply vacated as a public way. The owner of the property at 320 Luiza, who also owns the properties at 331 Lewis and 319 Lewis on north and south of this alley right-of-way, have requested to purchase that portion so that it can be combined with a lot at 320 Luiza to expand their lot size, which is a rather narrow depth lot. So, this would just sell the portion that had already been vacated. Sale price of the property is five hundred dollars and would be intended to be combined with a lot at 320 Luiza.
Well, all right. Comments, concerns from the audience? Counsel?
Fine.
Move to close?
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCamell.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving sale of a portion of vacated alley right-of-way located north of 320 Luiza Street.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's handle it.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCamell.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips. Aye.
Okay, number two, this is consideration of plans and specs for the 2019 HMA Street Resurfacing Project. Mr. Tisland. Mr., oh, is that Mr. McGregor? Thank you.
I'm going to go down here because this is where I'm used to standing. You have the PowerPoint from last week? That way I can see, turn around and awkwardly talk into the microphone.
Excellent, just the way we like it.
So, the 2019 HMA project is kind of a redo of the way we had laid out the five-year road plan, just from what we initially thought back in October. This year's HMA project will occur in the North Hill area. The green shaded roads, which I believe are Franklin and Iowa, and then North Sixth and Seventh will be, it'll be bid as two different divisions. The white roads shaded will be a separate section. We don't have a very good price for HMA. The most recent one was the DOT job and that inflates the price quite a bit, so we wanted to add a little bit more on there should we get a pretty good price for this type of work, so that is what you see. The ADA ramps are typically something that we do in a design process. It takes a lot longer to do the design ramps or to the ADA ramps, so we actually withheld them from this fall. We'll try and do them next spring, so that's one difference that you see in this HMA project versus the others. If you'd hit the next slide for me. The available budgeted funds is nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, the estimate's at six hundred, or six hundred ninety-seven, then we have engineering in there, so it brings the total cost up to seven hundred ninety-four for an estimate. We will go out to bids, receive them back with the next project actually that we'll be talking about on July 2nd. Similar contractor does both types of work, so we're hoping to try and, not necessarily package them together, but bid them side by side to get some better pricing.
It's groovy.
I had a question on the ADA ramps. So, if they're withheld, we add them later or?
We're going to do them next spring.
Okay. And that works? You just have to go stamp them in and lay them in?
Yeah, we've been doing it just kind of as practice. There's no, when you have federal or state funds, it's a requirement, since these are local funds, we just do it as practice, but you know, we're not required to do it as the closeout of the job, so, but we'll go back in.
Okay.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel? We're good? Get a motion, please.
I'm sorry. Motion to close?
Second.
Kathleen?
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCamell.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the plans and specs for the 2019 HMA Street Resurfacing Project.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCamell.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Okay, number three is consideration of plans and specifications for the 2019 Seal Coat Street Resurfacing Project. Mr. McGregor?
This project is Seal Coat, so what we do is we go in there and reclaim the rock surface underneath and we inject oil in there and then put rock back on top of it and roll it. And a year or two after the rock packs in, it looks fairly similar to asphalt. I mean, there's some differences, the lifespan of Seal Coat's a little bit different, but this year's project is in kind of two sections of roadways, even though they're split up. It is on Denmark and then Luiza. Luiza's in pretty rough shape. It is approximately nineteen blocks. The reason for the, kind of the spacing out is there's different surface types. Throughout the years, those surface types have been either concrete, asphalt, or and/or Seal Coat, so we're just trying to replace the Seal Coat roads in this area, not touching the concrete, so. If you'd hit the next slide for me. We have, we allot every year four hundred thousand dollars in road use tax funds and this year's project with engineering is a three hundred eighty-one thousand dollar estimated project, so we'll have a little bit of buffer should we have some higher costs on that. I think last year's project we were under, but this one will bid side by side with the HMA project and it'll come back on July 2nd, so we will award mid-July with the ability to get it done kind of this fall.
Questions or concerns from the audience? Counsel?
Nick, I have a concern, when there is those two different pavement types, is there anything done to, because it always seems like that down the road that becomes an issue where they connect and there's some potholes there or roughness. Is there anything we can do to make that process a little bit better? Do you know of or?
The two surfaces, you know, even asphalt doesn't meet that well with concrete.
Concrete, yeah.
The best thing to do is to try and, you know, get in there, try and keep an eye on it and rehab it, you know. We crack seal and that seems to try and keep the water out of there. It's tough to seal or to crack seal on Seal Coat, I mean.
Aren't we going to have problems regardless unless we're matching up, you know, concrete to concrete?
Concrete, concrete. I just noticed that we have, from time to time, there's an issue, that's why I was asking. Sounds good.
So, the Luiza, Denmark, and South Sixth is included in that?
A section of it, yep.
Okay.
Anything else? Good. Okay, good emotion?
Motion to close?
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCamell.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the plans and specs for the 2019 Seal Coat Street Resurfacing Project.
Second.
Kathleen?
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCamell.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance rezoning a portion of the property locally known as 705 Maple Street from C2 General Commercial to C1 Limited Commercial Zoning District.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Tisland?
Request to rezone 705 Maple from C2 to C1. This would allow residential use of the property. Currently, our C1 district allows residential use in the rear upper stories of the building, does require commercial storefront to remain for these type of properties. Most of the remaining properties on Maple Street are C1 except for the Ferguson. I think the two larger lots were zoned C2 originally, which allows more intensive use, but they're looking, they primarily use this as office right now and are wanting to set up initially one apartment and possibly up to three. Planning Commission did recommend approval, six to zero, and this does follow the future land use map designation of neighborhood mixed use, which states C1 is a compatible use.
Okay. We've already been here a couple times. Anybody from the audience, any issues on this? Okay, I see none. Counsel, we good?
Good.
Your Honor, I'd like to entertain a motion to amend. I'd like to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading, the ordinance rezoning a portion of the property locally known as 705 Maple Street from C2 to General Commercial to C1 Limited Commercial Zoning District to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading and for the final adoption of the ordinance rezoning property locally known as 705 Street from C2 General Commercial to C1 Limited Commercial Zoning District.
Second?
Second.
Yeah.
Thanks for doubling down. Okay, let's vote on the amendment.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCamell.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Okay, now let's vote as amended.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCamell.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Okay, good or done. Resolutions. Mr. Phillips?
Your Honor, I have a resolution for support of the sewer master plan.
Second.
So, as we discussed last week during the work session, I simply put a resolution in there to support the sewer master plan and I wanted to at least have Lauren from HR Green come and kind of rediscuss some of the things that we discussed last week and so that's what she's here to do, so if there's any follow-up questions, we can kind of have a conversation about that.
I'm just glad to see Lauren here tonight. The girl that came last week was kind of, she had a bad attitude.
I did have a bad attitude. I mean, she did, yeah, so. So, I'm going to try and keep this as brief as I can. I know last time we had some discussion, so hopefully we can move a little quicker for you because I know you have some pressing issues to get to, so, like you said, I'm Lauren O'Neil with HR Green. I came here to talk to you today about the sanitary sewer master plan, which encompasses the plan for the entire sewer system within the city of Burlington. These are the topics I'm going to go through today, starting with the purpose and then ending with our recommended plan moving forward. So, the purpose of a sanitary sewer master plan, it's to develop a roadmap for you guys to move forward with. Right now, you have sanitary sewer that is combined as well as separated in different parts of the city, so the idea behind this master plan would be to give you the next steps forward and as well as providing a negotiating tool with the DNR and the EPA as you move forward with your integrated plan. The next steps in the process would then be to move to the development of plans, specs, construction, and then ultimately verifying that what you've done and what we've suggested is working in the way it's intended. And then you move back to the master plan again, update, and move forward to developing the next plan. So, your existing sewer infrastructure is separated into three main basins, the Hawkeye Basin, the Cascade Basin, which is in blue, and the Masel Basin, which is these four basins right here, sub-basins right here. The Hawkeye Basin has been separated, the Cascade Basin has been separated, and the Masel Basin is currently under design for Locust, this little area here. The Locust Basin improvements have been discussed to you previously, I think Matt came down to talk to you about that, approaching that in a little different fashion and putting in brand-new sewer throughout the Locust Basin to see just how good we can get that system and how much rainwater and ionized we can remove out of that. Here's the existing sewer infrastructure pared down to the main trunk lines. And if you remember, last time I gave you a stat, does anybody remember how many miles of sewer you have, sanitary sewer?
Hundred and thirty.
Nailed it. She's got it.
I was going to say that.
I was going to say it too.
I'm just really glad you guys are all paying attention.
That's crazy, though.
Sanitary sewer is so fun to talk about and listen to. So, yes, you have a hundred and thirty miles of sewer within your city that is, requires updating and maintaining. The good news is, is that a new sanitary sewer lasts for about fifty to a hundred years, as you're seeing in some of your existing sewers now, so does last a while after you update it. You also have fifteen lift stations. These are crucial to the conveyance of solids and sewer, sewage to the sewer plant. So, we have, the three main lift stations would be Market and South and Silver. As a part of the master plan process, we took a look at each of these lift stations and assigned them a rating based on their condition. The condition includes safety, site, whether it's meeting the capacity it's supposed to, overall age, concrete structure, what that looked like, and all of that was pared down and was given to separate weightings and pared down to a single number and it's, and one being best, brand-new, just got started yesterday, five being fallen apart and really needing some assistance. The two that are in most need of repair right now are Market and South Street, mostly because of capacity issues. Also, I think Market's underwater right now, but that's a, that's a new development since I was here. I was here last week. So, but moving on, then we have the next three that are in the, the range of the three rating, three point five nine to three six two, which are Fourteenth Street, Golf Lane, and Volmer Street. And Fourteenth Street lift, lift station has had some capacity issues, and so that's why that is up there. That rating could potentially go down, I think I neglected to mention this last time, but I think this rating has the ability to go down if more INI is removed. So, a, a large driver of that high number is the capacity issues that are there, and if the, the inflow and infiltration is removed out of that sewer system upstream of that lift station, that number could go down. It has some other needed updates, but capacity is a, is a big one right now. Another part of the master plan is planning for future growth and development. We had identified, or the city had identified, three main areas that they anticipate growth happening. Flint Ridge Business Park, which is developed and somewhat, but still areas to, to grow there, the southwest undeveloped area, and then the undeveloped area southwest of the airport. We looked at flows from a sanitary sewer perspective. We also looked at flows from a storm water perspective, and the best ways to manage that. In order to look at the storm water management of each of these sites, we, we separated them into drainage basins. Flint Ridge Business Park, because it is developed and there's some infrastructure there currently, was divided into five areas. Flint Ridge Business Park does have some detention within that basin, so that is serving some of the storm water detention needs there. The southwest undeveloped area was divided into two based on topography, and similarly, the undeveloped area southwest of the airport was developed, or was separated into two basins as well. I think I mentioned last time, this is my nerdy table. So, this, the, the main thing you need to look at here when it comes down to it and development of these areas is the, the numbers at the bottom, and that will tell you what would be needed for detention within those, those areas. So, coming up with a way to store that, the water so that you are reducing a runoff event of a hundred year peak flow, so if you had a hundred year storm event, it would reduce the impacts downstream to something closer to a five year. So, it just allows that detention to slow down the water, if you will, and, and makes it a little bit easier for the system to handle. Here's a summary of the sanitary sewer flows that would be added as a, as this develops. Three point five-ish million gallons per day for an average flow would be added as this gets developed. Keep in mind, this doesn't happen in one time, and if the land use were to change at all, this number would, this is a pretty high level estimate and would need to be monitored as, as the growth happens. But, as a planning tool for treatment and conveyance, this is the number that we would, we would use, so. So, also as a part of the master plan, we looked at existing infrastructure flows and, and looked at the INI or the inflow, inflow and infiltration and how it's affecting the system. We flow monitored several locations within the city. One specifically was that Locust area, and that was, that will allow us to do that last step that I had mentioned before, which is verifying. So, we're taking a look at what it looks like now. We'll verify that, that the amount of reduction that we were able to see from the INI after that construction is complete. And then, there's several areas up in the Hawkeye Basin that we were trying to point us in the right direction of what needs to be addressed next as far as reducing the INI. Specifically, this northeastern part here looks like it needs to be the next piece on the block that they would chip off to smoke test or televise and then line and replace as needed. Oh, I'll mention also, we, we did tell, or we flow monitored upstream of Fourteenth Street Lift Station, and that was, that was where we identified that INI is a large issue there, and if you were to reduce that INI, that the lift station would be at a better rating and have a better capacity. So, here's just a summary of the flow monitoring. Sorry, let me take that back. Not a, a summary, it's a snapshot of the flow monitoring, just to give you an idea of how that flow looks in different basins. This large peaking red line there, that is Locust. So, that is an unseparated portion of your sewer. As you can imagine, that's mostly rainwater during this event. So, your sewer is acting as a storm sewer under a rain event, and it's peaking like it should, given the conditions. The other lines down here are different areas within the system in the Hawkeye Basin. So, on the north end of town. You can see there that it is still peaking quite a bit more than the, the average flow, which is somewhere in this range here, maybe around a hundred thousand. So, you're getting like a seven or eight peaking factor on that. I think overall, we averaged about a ten peaking factor for, I forget what rain event that was, but I think it was a two inch rain or so that occurred. It was a ten peaking factor for that flow rate, so. Normally, a peaking factor that we would use to design a sanitary sewer system, a new system, would be somewhere on that, the range of a four. So, just to give you an idea, you're getting a little bit around double, a little bit more than double than, of the peaking factor than what you would want to see. And the peaking factor is really what drives the sanitary sewer design because that's what causes backups. If it's too large and the pipe, the pipe can't handle it, it's the peak that is the problem. It's better to have a higher average than it is to have a higher peak for conveyance So, taking that information from the flow monitoring and the GIS information that the city has, we applied it to a modeling system called SewerDumps. We modeled six different scenarios. The first one being your average dry weather flow, normal day, no river, no high river, no wa, high water levels, groundwater levels, to, to take a look at what, how the system functions under normal flows. The next was a specific rain event that occurred on three eight, three five eighteen, and that allows us to take the modeling system and put in some factors and make it look like what we saw in the field. After calibrating it using that rain event, we then went to the two-year twenty-four hour design storm event, which is a three point oh eight inch event that happens over twenty-four hours. This is a, a design of, a rain event that the DNR can, has used before for, for sizing. Future, we looked at then what the future development would do on the existing system, how it impacts the existing system currently. And then, we modeled proposed improvements under scenario five, and scenario six was an alternative improvement to redirect the flow a different way, and we just evaluated how that would affect the system. Here is a summary of scenario one. Each of these items here, and I'm not sure if Jesse had a chance to share the full, or if you had the chance to share the full document yet, but these are in the...
They had, they had both. I don't know if from councils had it, but they had two documents to be able to...
Okay. So, these are, these are in the appendices, these, and you could take a better look at what each of these looks like. But, each of these callouts here indicates an area that it appears that pipes would surcharge. Looking at each of these locations individually, it appears that maybe just some additional site observation could eliminate these as issues. There might be just some, some areas that we don't have super accurate GIS data, or, you know, maybe something settled more than it did, and maybe there is an issue. But, if all of these areas were identified in the report and can be looked at a little bit further to confirm if the elevations are correct on the manholes and pipes. Scenario two shows what happened on the rain event at three five eighteen as best we could model it. You can see here, there was some surcharging within the system along, near the Lucas equalization tank. That's normal by the way it functions. There is a regulator there that only allows so much flow to get to the Market Street Lift Station, so the Market Street Lift Station is not overcome by flow, and it allows the flow to back up into the equalizations basin. Similarly, here on the Gunnison Tank, the flow backs up and overflows into the Gunnison Tank to help mitigate any overflow that would occur at the Market Street Lift Station otherwise. There were some other locations in here that are still red. Those are just a byproduct of some of those elevation issues that I described in the first scenario. But, the, the locations called out here are the new locations that showed up as, as a rain event was applied. All in all, these locations that you see as surcharging right now are not an issue. They are just the way the system works and, and is working and not causing issues. The next alternative was scenario three, which was the, the design rain event, the two-year twenty-four hour storm. You can see here that the surcharging effect backs up further into the sanitary sewer trunk lines, similarly upstream of Gunnison. There is also overflowing that would occur into the storm, or the drainage ways near Gunnison Tank and the Lucas Tank, as well as at the mouth of Cascade. Cascade is also, that has recently been separated, and they're not complete there yet with their separation, so this correctly describes what is occurring currently, but after equalization is installed, that would remove this overflow location theoretically. I'm an engineer, I need to always say theoretically. So, the next thing we looked at was scenario four, which is the application of the future development in those undeveloped areas. And we applied them all to this trunk line that then flows into Gunnison, just based on topography and our estimation of the way the, the routing would need to happen. This would need to be upsized, so there were some additional issues that were incurred there because of that additional flow, so that pipeline would need to be upsized, or would need to be pumped to a different location where there might be a larger sewer. The other things that were then incurred because of the additional flow was that there was a higher amount of overflow at Gunnison, and there was a higher amount of overflow at Lucas just because of the reduced capacity in the trunk line, because of the additional So, then we went to scenario five, in which we talked about the overall improvements that we would recommend, and these are not in any specific order, other than this was just how we identified them, but there were eleven improvements identified. Overall, a significant reduction in inflow and infiltration would be needed, and I, I know we talked about this last time I was here, but we, there is a specific percent reduction that we applied to the model, and for the areas that are currently combined, we would need to see a ninety percent reduction of that rapid inflow. That would be that peak inflow that you're getting from the first rain event, or right after the rain event happens. And then, for the areas that are already separated, and then some of the slower infiltration that's occurring in those separated areas, we would assume fifty percent removal of INI would be needed in order to make the system work under that design rainfall of two, a two-year twenty-four hour design storm. So, that would mean flow monitoring, smoke testing, lining, and repairs for the, specifically Hawkeye and Cascade, but then also through the separation, the process of separation, the Masl Basin as well. Improvement one down here is the rerouting of the Mississippi River Interceptor, which is currently in a location that makes it hard to service. That includes some additional lift stations would need to be installed, and a new gravity sewer up to the peak of the hill, and a new force main to get it to the peak of the hill as well. Improvement number two is the installation of a equalization basin south of Division Street and west of Plain Street, which is over here in this area here. So, that would be upstream of the Gunnison Tank to help mitigate that peaking flow coming from that future development. Improvement three was adjusting the Gunnison Flow Regulator to allow more flow through there to equalize that peak flow and allow more of it through. I told him to do that. I wanted him to make it interesting, so.
Seriously, who does that?
The next, because this is, everybody loves hearing about sewer, so I would...
Right on, right on.
Yeah. So, the next one would be to adjust the Brooks Flow Regulator to allow more flow down through that trunk sewer, adding an equalization basin at the lift station here at Market, at the same time increasing the Market Street Lift Station to allow more flow. And we estimated thirty million gallons per day would be needed. Improvement seven is down here to increase the size of that trunk sewer to allow more of that planned growth. Additional capacity would be needed at the wastewater treatment plant, and that's improvement eight. We looked at that as more of a peak flow treatment. Again, that peak flow is really what is hard to treat and hard to convey, so we would add a peak flow treatment at the, at the plant to help with that. Increasing the BN Flow Regulator in this area here, again, to allow more flow to get to the Market Street Lift Station to reduce some of the surcharging that was occurring. Adding an additional EQ basin and flow regulator upstream of the South Lift Station, so after this new improvement, and like I said before, this was not in any specific order, but after this new improvement for the Mississippi River Interceptor was installed, it would need to flow to that South Lift Station. So, that South Lift Station would also need to be increased to handle that, that flow. And then, also, yeah, and then the addition of that equalization basin at South to assist with reducing that peak factor, peaking factor. Scenario six was a little different scenario where we took, instead of putting a lift, or I'm sorry, instead of putting an equalization here at Division Street, we would put in a lift station and pump it down to Market Street. It, it turned out to not, it didn't allow your system to utilize itself to the fullest capacity the way it's currently designed, so it's a, it was an interesting idea to look at, but it just, it didn't allow you to really maximize the use of your existing system and infrastructure the way it's currently constructed. So, for recommendations, for Masl, which is the downtown area, Market, Angular, South, and Locust, we would recommend full separation, lining existing sanitary pipes, lining or replacing any brick manholes on the sanitary sewer, reusing the combined sewer as storm sewer, and putting in new sanitary sewer to replace that combined sewer. The Hawkeye Sewer Improvements... The Hawkeye sewer improvements were INI abatement, so lining, replacing, removing intakes as much as possible. The regulator improvements to allow more flow to the trunk line as more capacity is available as INI is reduced. Additional EQ at Market and upstream of the Gunnison tank, and then the trunk sewer improvements along Highway sixty-one. The Cascade sewer improvements include, excuse me, INI abatement, improving the south lift station, increasing the size and adding equalization, a new gravity sewer along Main Street, four new lift stations to serve these smaller residential neighborhoods, a new Cascade lift station and equalization at Cascade lift station to reduce the peaking factor and eliminate the overflows. These are the estimates for each of those lift station improvements, Market Street lift station being the most costly, sorry, Market and South being the most costly, but the most needed based on capacity requirements. And then as we move down the way, smaller lift stations would need to be upgraded and replaced as needed to address the capacity. As I mentioned before, this fourteenth street lift station cost could be turned into more INI removal, and maybe then the lift station wouldn't need to be replaced at such a high burden state. The wastewater treatment plant improvements would be needed to increase the peak flow capacity as you're increasing the south and Market Street lift station. Nutrient reduction is definitely something that's on your radar right now, you're having to work through that now with the DNR. You'll see when we get to the recommended plan, the nutrient reduction is pushed out further, as much as we could hope to focus on cleaning up the collection system. Also solids handling improvements would be required at the plant in the near future too, or relatively near future. So based on your current budget, which is around three million dollars per year, this is the plan, and most importantly, the priority in which we would address these items. Given the current budget, this pushes the completion of all of these things out to 2068.
Do you have a total for that?
I think that Jim had it pretty close. I think it's somewhere near a hundred million, is that?
Hundred, yeah, I thought it was a hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty million?
Fifty-nine or something like that.
I had added at one point, too.
I think you had mentioned before that you'd bought a Mustang, and it was expensive, and it was a loan that was taken out too far.
Yeah.
The thing about.
It was spread out so long.
Yeah. The thing about sanitary sewer and the reason you can get extended loans for that is that it does last for a long time. Wastewater treatment plants and lift stations do need to be upgraded, but the main infrastructure and the concrete infrastructure will last for fifty to a hundred years, so once it's completed, you wouldn't then need to touch it again, hopefully, until a hundred years later, other than minor maintenance. If we had our druthers, we would speed it up. This is more of a ten million dollars per year on average, about nine million per year, I think somewhere between nine and ten, which includes an emergency budget of three hundred thousand per year and a specifically set aside lining and INI abatement budget of five hundred thousand dollars per year. And then all of these projects then would bring you to 2036 if you had nine million dollars per year to spend on it. It would be our idea that you could go to the DNR with the extended affordable schedule in hopes to land somewhere in between. Like I said before, my favorite part is, you know, the education and city policies, so working through your schools and your community outreach, this is a good way to get to the citizens and allow them to know how they can help out and help mitigate some of these issues. A lot of issues come from private INI, so that's anything beyond the right-of-way that's occurring in their sanitary sewer lateral, maybe they have pumps, some pumps tied into their sewers. These are big things that you can talk to the citizens about and develop plans for them to get those off of the sanitary sewer system to help you reduce the flows in the future. Okay, did I go fast enough? Is that better?
I feel pretty good about it. How do you feel about it?
You know, it's a lot of money, and I know that, and it's a, it's a hard, it's hard to look at from right now, but if you take one piece at a time and start to tackle it in a systematic way, I think you'll, you'll find that you'll make some major improvements in a short amount of time.
It's not like we really have a choice not to, you know, it's.
Yeah, we've already been doing that.
Yeah, you can't ignore it, but we appreciate all the hard work. Steve, do you have any questions?
I guess I would follow up with, this is kind of part one in a two-part series. Next week you'll hear from the integrated plan and kind of the methodology that we're going to go to the Iowa DNR and try and renegotiate. It takes a little bit different approach than what the sewer master plan did, where we have to consider compliance for our current consent order as something we're going to have to stick with. Our integrated plan takes kind of a different approach to that and kind, and kind of does away with the idea of having to separate the sewers by keeping some of the combined It's going to be a different approach, so I'm not going to try and muddy the waters between the two different plans of what's going on, so.
This gives you a baseline on what it would cost.
Correct.
To do everything the way the DNR has told you to do it right now.
And so there'll be a lot of information that we take, and so it seems like, you know, for some it may be like too long of a conversation, but out of the three hundred page document and all the data, I think that's the biggest thing, is there's a lot of, there's a lot of data and, you know, all that modeling took months, almost a year worth of work to put together and actually run, so there's a lot of data behind, you know, this, this plan, and that's, and we need that, so.
Yep. Are we good?
Yep.
That's daunting, that's all.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, we're good?
Good.
I'm so, oh, Mr. Shanahan with a fresh haircut.
Got to get my ears exposed once in a while. Leon Shanahan, eighteen twenty-one Mount Pleasant Street. How much analysis has been done as far as the inflow? I see some issues in my own neighborhood, perhaps causing the inflow problems where storm sewers are plugged, and then I assume sump pumps are running and pumping the water that's going into the basement because the storm sewers are plugged into sanitary. How much research has been there, been done, or where are we at on that?
So, yeah, so I'm not, I'm not sure specifically where your neighborhood is, but if it's in one of the combined areas of town, which may be.
It's Mount Pleasant Street.
So it's Cascade, or it's Hawkeye.
So, okay, so that's a separated part of town. We were more focused on the storm in Locust. We had, didn't really look at the storm in Hawkeye. We were more focused on the sanitary sewer in Hawkeye. But that's, we took real-time data from flow monitoring that was occurring to see how much of that INI is getting into the sanitary sewer. We did not chase it back to find where that might be coming from. Those are the recommendations that we make in here, is to put more effort into trying to find some of those locations where that might be happening, where the storm sewer is directly tied in, or the sanitary, or I'm sorry, the sump pumps are also directly tied in, and, and making some improvements that way. Does that answer your question?
Well, I, I guess I'm concerned because what you're showing.
Can you move closer to the microphone, they can hear you.
I guess my concern is, you're still showing inflow on the separation they did on Mount Pleasant Street, and I think that would be an interesting test to see, since that has been done, why that, why you still have so much inflow. For the record, I don't have a sump pump.
The problem that was created in Hawkeye was to meet the compliance schedule, the city elected to install only storm sewer and did nothing with the sanitary system that is, you know, at the, at the time was aged and is even worse now. So the INI issues created in Hawkeye were never really truly dealt with. They were dealt with.
They took those peak flows.
Correct.
So they, by removing the, the storm sewer inlets and redirecting those flows, it did take down that peak flow, but it didn't address, address things like sump pumps, or cracks in the pipe, or cracks in the manholes, or the brick manholes that are degraded and losing their mortar, so there's a lot that can be done. In Locust, we've, the city's elected to go a little different route in that improvement, and we are putting in new sanitary sewer as a, as a different way, and I think that once we get the information after that sanitary sewer is installed, when we get that information from the flow monitoring and compare the pre-flow and the post-flow, I think it'll give us a lot better indication of how that separation works in comparison to the previous method. So there's still a lot of INI in, yeah, in those previously separated areas, mostly due, I think, to aging infrastructure.
I'm not getting any in here either.
None of us are.
We're all aging infrastructure. All right. You satisfied, Mr. Shanahan?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Counsel? You satisfied?
Yes.
Hey, I just want to thank you again for coming. The last Lauren that they sent last week, she was kind of rooting me, so.
Yeah, sorry.
All right.
I'll make sure she sees the officer.
Thank you.
Kathleen?
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
It's a lot of money, but aye.
All right.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving an amended engineering services agreement with Vinstra and Kim for advanced construction funds associated with the Tiger Grant.
Second.
So the, the contract in front of you is an amended one from, one that you approved back in early April. This Tiger Grant agreement process has not been a simple and easy one. Advanced construction funds allows us to begin the contract work prior to getting into the agreement, so we rewarded the advanced construction. The problem is, is the DOT wanted to do audits over the, the contract. Unfortunately, they did not like the language in that contract, so they asked us to change it, and so that's what is, is in front of you, is a, is a contract that's been changed. So what you approve is a contract, not just for the advanced construction, but also the Tiger Grant, which the Tiger Grant, I just got word, will be up in front of you in two weeks, so, or over the next two weeks. And so the, the engineering services also was amended to include right-of-way acquisition, of which the engineering services is paid for by the Tiger Grant, so the full contract of the engineering services is a one point eight million dollars awarded to Vinstra and Kim. So you're approving this, but it ultimately leads to the contract that, that Vinstra and Kim has, so I just want to make, give you a full picture of what's going on. It's complicated, but I mean, we're finally at the point where we can get moving on some of the Tiger Grant design.
Okay.
Questions or concerns from the audience?
Ladies? Eric Renteria, five twenty-one North Fifth Street. You know, I've expressed my concerns about the Tiger Grant from the very first day that it was awarded, and I read in the paper not too terribly long ago that the time for deciding how to apply the funds from the Tiger Grant were going to be decided soon. And as I brought up at the, the last time I spoke about the Tiger Grant, it seems like the, the way that that money is supposed to be spent is yet to be decided until the point where it's already been decided, and there really isn't, it doesn't seem to me, at least, to be a process where, where those of us who are citizens have an opportunity to really participate in how those funds are spent. And, and this is a, in light of what's going on at the riverfront today, I have expressed before my concern about spending this money on things that do not advance economic recovery in downtown Burlington, and, and you look at what's going on at the riverfront today, and the loss of, of the potential for, for economic recovery is further removed in this process. So, so as we look at, apparently you can make changes to the Tiger Grant, never really saw how, I followed this pretty closely, never really had the opportunity to, to give suggestions or ideas on how the Tiger Grant money should, should be spent, was only told how it could not be spent, and even though I read the Tiger Grant and understand what's involved in submitting that proposal and, and what we can do, I have a great deal of frustration that has only been, been re-emphasized by, by the flood that has taken place in, in downtown Burlington. So I don't know, I don't know where you all stand in regards to how the, the Tiger Grant process is, has unfolded, but if there is an opportunity to go back and revisit, because the riverfront really is not where we get any bang for our buck with these, with these dollars, and if, if ever there was a sign from above that we should spend that money differently, I would say that, that is it. So just voicing some frustration at this process and how the Tiger Grant spending takes place, you know, we're giving away one point eight million dollars to a firm to begin work on things that most of the people that I talk to in Burlington say really doesn't bring any economic recovery to, to our downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Renteria. Any comments, counsel?
Well, I think the, the, a big thrust of the Tiger Grant is Maine and Jefferson, so it's somewhat removed from the riverfront, but I, there's still, we're going to be discussing it, you know, over the next few weeks, so there's some time for public input.
Well, and I want to reiterate, the Tiger Grant, the money that we're using to pay the engineers is Tiger Grant money. The reason why nothing has occurred is because we've been in conversations with the DOT and Federal Highway to get to this point where we're actually in agreement on the schedule. It's nitpicky, it's details on dates when certain things are submitted, so nothing has really happened as far as design, so that's the reason why nothing has really been brought forward for citizens to comment on, because we haven't even gotten the agreement. And so we will, in two weeks, have that agreement in front of you to approve and then return, and then we can begin the design process on what's going to happen on, you know, the, the part of the application for the riverfront, but also Maine and Jefferson.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? Counsel? Kathleen?
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we will entertain comments from the audience. I would like to remind you all that if your comments are regarding or referring to something that is not on the agenda, we cannot have a back and forth, but if you want to stick around, you can catch any of us on the way out, but we want to hear from you tonight. So anyone? We'll start, yeah, well, we just started way back, I was going to say we'll start from the back and we'll work our way out, so.
Thank you.
How you doing?
I'm still moving.
All right.
Slower.
All right.
Larry Williams, fifteen sixty-seven Mason Lane. Last time I came here to speak, Nick was sitting there, this time he's sitting there. Maybe I should come more often because the man in charge doesn't seem to show up, although he's just as capable. And thank you, your crew, for what you did at the riverfront. I know it was disappointing, but I think everybody supports your efforts. I came here because my wife is pushing me. She's upset about the Cascade Bridge thing. Okay, she's upset with the president, too, but I'm not concerned about Cascade Bridge. It will take its time, it will happen, but I just wanted to present something I haven't heard anybody talk about, and that's if, at the, at the bottom of that ravine, I haven't been down there for sixty-five years, but anyway, there, there is a large pond or lake that feeds into the river at the base of that. There's also a major sewer line, which they were talking about, that goes down through there, so you would need to have access. there, so you would need to have access to it. My thought was to not build a bridge, but to build a tunnel, maybe two hundred feet or longer. The concrete and that, we're talking a few hundred thousand dollars, it's not that much, it's going to be the labor, some reinforcing rod and so forth. But if we built a tunnel, say fifteen feet high and nineteen feet wide, a couple hundred feet long, and then dump, fill on top of it, we would build it up there, we'd have a road, we wouldn't have to worry about a bridge deteriorating. Road doesn't cost a lot to pave, very easy to maintain. Put a thirty-one foot roadway up there, a four-foot sidewalk on each side, and a railing. Uh, the other problem is the road that goes down under the bridge, would have to come down over that slope somehow. But it's, it's something about, you, you could do it very easily, I forget, Nick, how much does it cost to take the bridge down, is it six hundred?
Two hundred.
Remove the bridge?
Yeah.
In today's dollars, probably close to half million.
Half a million.
Three fifty to half million.
That, that would be the biggest first chunk. You probably, you probably could, for that amount of money, build that tunnel or close to it, if, I'm assuming about a half a foot, about a foot thick, with reinforcing rod. And then, over a period of time, which we'd get the bridge built, or the pass built about the same time as you should get the money to build a bridge, five, six years from now, uh, we could, we could fill that and compact it and build a, a road over it, and then people'd have their view, and, uh, it'd be very simple to maintain over the years. The Viaduct under Ash Street, north of Oak Street, and the one under Main Street at south, I'm seventy-seven, they were there long before me, and they're still doing very fine. So if, if it's engineered right and it's built right, it'll last a very long time, longer than bridges will last. And that would give us access to that sewer line or anything we need, all we'd have to do is put the, the gate at each end to make sure people don't go in there and play in the tunnel, but, you know, it's, it's food for thought, okay? Think about it, and you see some design, as, rough estimates of cost, I think it'd come out the same or cheaper than building a bridge. And the people in town could see progress, you know, they took the bridge down, they built the tunnel, they're filling it in, and maybe we wouldn't be down here on your neck every week trying to figure out when you're going to build that blank bridge, you know? Thank you for your time. Good work.
Thank you. I appreciate your creative thinking, and, uh, situations I think we need to be open for some creative thinking, thank you. Mr. Renteria?
I don't know. Eric Renteria, five twenty-one North Fifth. I don't know if it's a possible, Eric, to show, um, a photograph, can, do you have a way to put a picture up there?
What are you whipping out there?
So I don't know if you can see that very well or not, but that's out in front of our store downtown. Um, that's on a Saturday morning as we open, and, uh, every parking space, uh, for as far as the eye can see is taken. Not one of those, uh, people is, uh, is inside my store. Um, if I show you the picture going the other direction, I have the exact same thing. Every parking space is full, and not one of those, uh, people is, is inside my store. Across the street, you can kind of see is the same way, all those parking spaces are full, not one of those people is inside my store. A year and a half ago, in January, I came to the council, we talked about parking, and, um, and I was told that if, six months, if the parking situation was not improved, that this council would be first in line to, uh, to make improvements. I have sent a parking analysis of my own to Eric Tisland, um, for his review, and I, I will readily admit, I took the first easily gained information and put it together in that report, uh, but it shows that we should have about eight thousand parking spaces downtown, based on the square footage of retail space, and, um, and we have about eight hundred. For what we spend on the riverfront, twenty-three million dollars, um, we could have four parking ramps in downtown Burlington. So a little bit, little bit of frustration. But my, uh, my point today really is that, um, is that I wanted to ask the council if you guys believe that the parking situation downtown has gotten any better, and, uh, to find out what it is that you're going to do, um, to improve that. Since I came, um, a year and a half ago to this podium, uh, we have lost the Ivy, we have lost, um, we have lost the, the haircut place across the, the styling place, um, we lost the old mill, we lost the, the railroad toy railroad shop downtown, we lost Tattered Paracel. It, it's about twelve businesses that have, have left downtown, and I don't know if anyone else, uh, senses it. And I, and I hate to be, I guess I'm having a bad day, um, I hate to be, um, negative, but, um, but I, as I, as I suggested, that, right after the tamifier, that, that if we don't, uh, get proactive on some things, um, downtown Burlington's really going to be in trouble. And, uh, and I think that's kind of where we're headed. Parking, to me, is a big part of that, um, but I think there's other things also, um, and I, and I just don't see, um, I just don't see anything, as a, a business owner downtown, that tells me that, uh, that we're on it, and that we're gonna, and we're gonna make things better. So I'm throwing this out there, knowing that, that you can't necessarily, uh, respond, but we've got to do something, um, about parking, and I, I really feel like we need to do something about downtown to, um, to get it back up on its feet. So, uh, with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Renteria, appreciate you coming down. Mr. Shanahan?
Leon Shanahan, eighteen twenty-one Mount Pleasant Street. I hate to say these words, but on the riverfront, I told you so.
I knew you were coming down to say that.
You're trying, there is just no way with these levee construction wars that you're ever gonna win. You put a levee on, or flood wall on the Burlington side, the Illinois is gonna pump up theirs, how high do you want to build? The problem you've got, and some people attribute to the problem to, well, it's climate change. Well, there's people that say climate change is here to stay, well then why are we trying to outdo climate change? Climate's always changing, this is Iowa, if you don't like the weather now, it'll be different in five minutes. You know, farmers on minor waterways on their farmland are encouraged to have grass buffers between their fields and existing or suspected waterways. You're not going to be able to restrain the Mississippi, and the, the so-called five-hundred-year flood level, that's a moving target. What man has done to the Mississippi River is relegated it to a, a series of ponds, um, twenty-seven, twenty-seven of them, I believe, the locks and dams, and a channel that three-quarters of mile wide. Pond sealed in. So what the five-hundred-year flood level is today, with additional sedimentation and siltation on down the road, is going to be higher and higher. You're never going to be able to prevent the flooding that's happening, happening in downtown Burlington. The easiest way to do, and I suggested this many times before, is you need to withdraw from the riverfront. The first step would be no new construction east of Main Street. That's, you know, how many times do you have to be wiped out before you understand? You're just not going to beat Old Man River. Uh, you know, the five-hundred-year flood level, nobody's been here that's been keeping records for five-hundred years, we don't really know what that is, that's just a hypothetical number. You also have a thousand-year flood, the ten-thousand-year flood, there's an equal chance of those in any given year. You know, we need to stop wasting our money trying to beat Old Man River, it's just not gonna happen. You know, I, I was impressed, I was ten years old when I saw the flood of sixty-five, I'm giving away my age now. But that was, made an indelible vision in my mind, just as far, as a little kid, ten years old, looking out, as far as you could see looking east, nothing but water. And we're still trying to overpower the river. You're not going to do it, and I know, as soon as the water recedes, there's going to be pressure from the Chamber of Commerce, well, we need a higher wall, we need more flood walls. The cheapest way to do it, you're looking to protect everything a hundred million dollars. How much would it cost just to tear the stuff down that's east of Main Street? It's gonna be a lot cheaper. The railroad doesn't have much problem, they've elevated their right-of-way, pour a little more rock, and they're done with it. And, you know, it just should be no more improvements, no more construction, get federal grants, whatever it takes, but get everything east of Main Street gone. Let it be a grassy strip. That means Memorial Auditorium, tear it down. If you can't clean up the Port of Burlington building, tear it down. You're just wasting our money.
Thank you, Mr. Shanahan. Again, as always, I appreciate your consistency. Anybody else from the audience? Appreciate you guys tonight, thanks for all your comments. Uh, Mr. Tisland? Kathleen?
Just a reminder, I have nomination petitions in my office, if anyone wants to stop in, some up.
Okay. Nomination petitions.
That's for you.
All right. Peter Mutter?
Yes, I have some happy news, my son Harrison graduated from BHS yesterday, so.
Graduated to U.S.?
And we had these wonderful cupcakes that were outstanding, anyway, I had to munch on one, because they're just so good. But, um, a lot of things going on downtown Burlington, so don't let a little bit of water dissuade you, the farmer's market on Thursdays, outdoor movies start Saturday, June eighth, Hotel Transylvania, June fifteenth, Smallfoot, and June twenty-eighth, Turbo. Shout out to Zizer's Florist and all the volunteers that helped plant the beautiful flowers down there. Shout out to all the volunteers for the Snake Alley Criterium, I forgot to say that last week, so I apologize, so I'm gonna say it again, since I missed it last week, a shout out to all the volunteers who helped out with the Snake Alley Criterium, and you know what, it didn't rain, it didn't rain, it always rains that day, it didn't rain, so, that's unique in itself.
It was a good day.
For this year.
We'll take it.
And then, um, remember that in the aftermath of the flood, um, and the remediation efforts depend on our local sales tax increment, so Amazon doesn't care if our riverfront floods, Amazon doesn't care if our downtown is protected or not, so we need to be sure and shop local. Spending your money locally in Burlington does make a difference.
Would you high-five that lady for me?
Give me a fist bump?
That's right. Well said. Counselor?
I have nothing.
MPT?
Um, just to, uh, you know, highlight the downtown activities, uh, you know, farmer's market at four thirty, I always liked you have times, too.
I went down last week, it was really fun, big, it was a fun time. It was really fun, good food, lots of food trucks down there, and vendors, and.
We had a party here.
It was fun, it was a good time.
And then, um, for the, the movies that start, the Fifth and V Outdoor Cinema, that's Saturday, seven thirty, uh, and then, of course, don't forget our parks, we've got the Teddy Bear Picnic, um, this Sunday, uh, at Crable Park at four P.M., and then just stick around and listen to the Muni Band, the Burlington Municipal Band, and that's at seven thirty. And then, of course, uh, the Bees will be back in town this weekend, Friday and Saturday, six thirty for those games.
Right on.
I, I do have one thing, council talk, do you think you can do it? We're switching council talk and the manager talk this week.
Right.
Because Jim's out of town.
I will be out of town as well, so.
Okay. Um, that is.
Wednesday, nine o'clock.
All right, I'll put it in my calendar.
Okay.
I just want to remind everybody, oh, uh, Mr. McGregor?
Are you gonna give me a turn?
Excuse me?
Yeah. Obviously, uh, everybody in this building and listening probably knows what's occurred on Saturday. Uh, I sent out a press release, uh, of, of what happened, uh, we lost the HESCO in the southern wall, um, at approximately one thirty. The water backfilled every area, all the areas that we had protected. We have barricades up now blocking the roads, uh, I think the most important thing that I think was, that needs to be reiterated, uh, is that the floodwaters are not something that you should be in. Uh, there's currently raw sewage that is being pumped out of the basements of many of the areas affected in the downtown, uh, so the waters are not something to be, you know, walking around in. Uh, for instance, my staff has to receive tetanus and hepatitis shots, uh, to be in and around and working in any of the floodwaters, so that is just something I would want to reiterate, uh, again, that the floodwaters are not something, it's not a pool, um, you know, it's, it's, it's something to stay away from, so, uh, we, the water has recessed a couple of inches, we need it to recede, uh, several feet before we're really able to go in there and assess the damages that are done to the buildings, so, um, I've had plenty of, uh, requests from media on updates, um, and, you know, press releases, there will not be anything that really is there to update until the water has receded some, at which point, we know kind of where we stand with certain facilities, uh, we will, uh, put out information, but until then, I really don't have a whole lot of, of other information to, uh, to give out, so.
I just want to thank the staff for all the hard work, uh, Nick, make sure you reiterate that, uh, they really, uh, they did, they, they worked extremely hard, and, uh, you know, we can't ask any, go ahead.
I appreciate that, I know I, uh, I came in early to talk with the guys, and, like myself, I was pretty disheartened on, you know, you spend three months trying to, to protect, uh, something, and you, you work your tails off doing it, and just when you think you had it, um, you don't. You know, I, I don't want to speculate on the reason why we had a failure, um, you know, they'd been up for three months, uh, it was on a concrete slab that really had no base underneath of it. It was at twenty-four point five foot, so, you know, that's a lot of head pressure, so a lot of things happen, so.
Anyways, again, staff did a fantastic job, and, uh, we couldn't ask, uh, anymore from out of them. Leia? You're supposed to answer once, Leia? Leia?
She's waiting for you to say Simon's.
Uh, please don't interrupt me when I'm speaking. Anyways, uh, I would just like to, again, reiterate what, what Mr. McGregor said, um, parents be parents, and don't let the kids play in that water, that's, that, that's not, uh, that wouldn't be, uh, anything good for them, uh, so let's make sure you, uh, you take care of business on that, and, uh, there was something else, Kathleen, that I was supposed to say? For the life of me, I can't think of it now, uh, so. That's a sign of old age, my friends, it's time to go! Can I get a motion, please?
Move the post.
Second.
Moved in second, twice. Kathleen, take us out.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned, thank you all, good night.
He's just a cute little half.